To begin the evening, we would like Chief King to introduce two recently hired members of our Public Safety Department. Public Safety Officer Dickey and Dispatcher Ostrom.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Fisher, Mayor Protam McCarthy, Commissioners Baxter, Buckley, and Fisher, City Managers Hendrickson and City Staff, it is again my pleasure to speak here tonight. To introduce to the Commission, the City Administration, Public Safety Officer Jake Dickey, our newest member of the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department. In addition to being an exceptionally qualified candidate, PSO Dickey represents a milestone for our agency, reaching a fully authorized staffing level. Upon his graduation, which is this Thursday, I understand, and his state test was a success, passing it today, and subsequent completion of our field training program, which is anticipated in early winter of 2026, PSO Dickey will bring the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department to a fully staffed level at an operational for the first time in over a decade. This is a point of extreme pride for myself and our agency, from both a local and a national perspective. The International Association of Chiefs of Police released recently a national study that indicates approximately seventy percent of all public safety departments are understaffed by ten percent or greater at this time. Locally, no other public safety department in this area has reached a staffing level at an operational or authorized level to date. But back to PSO Dickey. Jake graduated from Fenton High School in 2022. He attended Oakland Community College and Eastern Michigan University, where he studied fire science and emergency medical intervention. Jake achieved his state certifications as a firefighter one and two and in hazmat operations after graduating from the Oakland Fire Academy in 2024. He also earned his emergency medical technician license through the state. This Thursday, as I stated earlier, he is set to graduate from the Oakland Police Academy, earning his state law enforcement license. Before joining our department, he began his public safety career by serving as a firefighter with the Fenton and South Lion Fire Departments. Jake then made the exceptional decision to join the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department, the best public safety department on the face of this earth. Jake has been described as an outstanding firefighter, who is hardworking, professional, with unquestionable integrity and a passion for public safety. Next week, Clerk Burton will administer Jake's official oath of office, as he will then begin our FTO training program with our agency. At this time, I would like to call forward Jake's family, including his father, John, who will pin his badge.
I think this is more difficult than...
You're okay.
You're okay. Take your time, sir.
Okay, bingo.
All right. Welcome to the team.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Dad. No, you're fine. No, you're fine.
Just to let you know, sir, as he gets promoted throughout his career, you'll only have to do that four, maybe five more times. It's been excellent. There's no blood, nobody got poked.
Yeah, that's good. That's good.
Ladies and gentlemen, Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Officer Jake Dickey.
First off, I'd like to thank the City of Bloomfield Hills for accepting my application, also with Chief King. I appreciate it. I really am thankful for you giving me the chance to serve here. And believe in me, like I said in my interview with you, you don't have to worry about me, sir. But thank you again, sir, for giving me opportunity, and thank you for my family. You know, getting through EMT, fire, and health police, I graduated on Thursday again, which is a huge accomplishment. And I don't think I could have done it without you guys.
If I could, I'd like to take another moment just to introduce another member of the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department, Dispatcher Stephanie Ostrom. Another exceptional candidate that I think we kind of stole from another agency, who was recruiting her very heavily, might be located just to our southwest. But anyway, we did the right thing and we got a great candidate. Stephanie graduated from Elba High School in 2013. She attended Eastern Michigan University, where she studied mathematics. She then began her public safety service career by serving as a dispatcher with the Lelandaw County and Grand Traverse County Sheriff's Departments and the Royal Oak Police Department. Again, Stephanie made an exceptional decision, in my opinion, to join the Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Department, the best public safety department around. Dispatcher Ostrom has been described as a hardworking, professional dispatcher with exceptional communication skills and operates effectively in high-stress situations. Stephanie has joined us originally in September and has been performing extremely well in her CTO training program with our agency. She is joined here tonight by her boyfriend Tristan. She's requested not to speak, so at this time, I would just like to introduce to the city and the commission Bloomfield Hills Public Safety Dispatcher Stephanie Ostrom.
Right. It's true. She speaks all day.
Welcome to the team. Terrific. Next, City Manager Dave Hendrickson will introduce our new building official and building inspector, Scott Worthington.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commission. The City of Bloomfield Hills has taken an important step to strengthen the management and oversight of its building department. As construction in our community continues at a steady pace, with projects that are increasingly complex and of exceptional quality, it is essential that we have an experienced and highly qualified professional guiding this work. The building official plays a critical role in ensuring compliance with the State of Michigan Construction Code and city ordinances while upholding the character and integrity that define Bloomfield Hills. The city has recently hired Scott Worthington as our new building official to meet this responsibility. Scott brings over twenty-five years of experience in local government service, including eight years as a building official for the City of Ferndale and seventeen years with the City of Birmingham as an assistant building official, plan reviewer, and inspector. Scott holds a Bachelor of Science in Architecture from Lawrence Technological University. He's certified through the State of Michigan International Code Council. Scott is also the Vice President of the Oakland County Building Officials Association. Scott has started in September fifteenth. We are fortunate to have someone of his caliber, in my opinion, joining our leadership team. And at this time, Scott, I'm sorry, stand up, and if you wouldn't mind, come up and say a word or two.
I just want to thank Dave and the team for giving me the opportunity to work in this wonderful community. I'm looking forward to it, and I'm here to help the residents and anybody that needs it.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Scott has actually done inspections for us years ago here. So he, one of the reasons why, when we talked with Scott and we interviewed him, one of the reasons why he wanted to come to Bloomfield Hills is because of the complex nature of the construction here. And so it's that attitude that I think really drew us to him. And so we want everybody to be happy, but we believe Scott will be happier because of the unique character of the city. So thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Scott.
And thank you, everyone, for coming to support all the new people on the team. We will now review the consent agenda. Any questions regarding the finance report from Sandra?
Mayor, I have a couple. Sandra, or Dave, whichever. We had a nineteen thousand dollar repair to an engine. Because that's not the new one, right?
We had a nineteen thousand dollar repair to a...
Engine one?
Yeah, to engine one, to our fire engine, right?
Did it break? Or is that not the new one, is it?
No.
No, it's the second oldest one.
Second oldest one. I mean, we have an older one, too? Okay, I just wondered that I just saw that big expense in there.
I'm ignoring the details, ma'am, but it's about pumps and large load and valves.
That's okay. I'm in the parts business. I'm all good. Well, while you're still talking, then. So you're almost done with your fire training, I see?
Yes, ma'am.
You'll be dumb to ever fit. I bet you're looking forward to that.
Yes, I am, ma'am.
Okay. And then I also saw the patrol that, I thank you for those results. Just, you know, having a better awareness in our community and being able to decrease in traffic complaints and decrease in vehicle crashes on Woodward, I think that's great, especially given, you know, the fatal accidents that we've been occurring because of high speeds and things like that, that I've been watching that. I follow Sheriff Bichard on Facebook, and he always talks about the fatals, and it's mostly because of speed. So I think that's great. And then also, I don't know, I mean, we're gonna, I know we're gonna talk about this, but I know that the police, they left. Dang it. I just want to compliment you guys on the open house on Sunday. It was great. You just walked up and, you know, just seeing the cars and the equipment and it was something that residents could truly say, wow, look at this protection I have. This is what I pay taxes for, you know, and I just thought you guys did a great job. You had, you know, talking to everybody, you were talking with everybody, and especially the little kids were just adorable with that fire. I wouldn't even try the fire hose, because I'd probably fall over.
Let me interject. I should have said something while your whole team was here, because it was tremendous team effort. And we loved how the community came into the play, invited them all to serve fabulous food fair and the impressive way you displayed all the SWAT, you know, SWAT equipment, as well as the ladder with the flag, and it was a very patriotic and very impressive show of our department. So thank you to the whole team. I wish I said something when they were all here, but...
If I can, just for a moment, the staff has been phenomenal. This is my first year, we brought this back. One of my list of things to do that the City Manager asked me to do is bring this back, since the last one was 2019, before COVID. Me being one of the new guys here, it was exceptional to see the team come together, support us from the public safety side, dispatching, City Administration, City Manager Hendrickson, Assistant City Manager Burton, all of the staff, everyone, from BPW to Finance. We could not have done it by ourselves, but it was a complete team effort, and it was phenomenal. For me to just kind of sit back and watch it, and next year will be even better.
Thank you. It was, yeah, it's the city staff and everything. You guys all did a phenomenal job.
And you might have a new firefighter, my two-year-old grandson. He's thrilled to be able to get a hold of that. Fire hose.
That was pretty funny. Have you ever thought about that?
Thank you.
My next question I have is on Leah, the sanitary sewer. You said rehabilitation project in construction. You're continuing with the lining in areas that need to be dug up. Where are we on that? And are we halfway done? Are we done?
I think we're about halfway through it right now.
It's not a line item in the budget.
And so are we finding any problems with these, or?
We found one area that was a little worse, because we had to go through and re-televised all of them. So we did find a couple areas. We just need to get closer and do a different type repair, which we're at, but for the most part, it's what we planned.
It's pretty standard?
Yep.
Okay. And last one I have is Amy. I know that you've done, I know you've done a lot to talk about Precinct Two and the new election of what it is. I think my neighbors are the only ones who don't pay attention. My neighbors probably won't talk to me after this, but I keep telling them about, do you know the new, and they haven't heard it yet. I have to tell them, it's at the Kingsley now, you know, and they go, oh, I didn't see that. Or they'll, some of them will say, too, they're absentee, which is a big thing of it. But we are going to have somebody at Precinct Two, at the church, all day, right?
I have spoke with the church. They have given me permission. Their building is vacant right now, so they are making an accommodation for on-election.
Annoyed?
Yes.
You know, so there'll be a sign to say, voting has moved to Kingsley?
Yes. And there's still two more mailings, two more direct mailings to those specific individuals and two more e-newsletters that are scheduled before Election Day.
I didn't get one. Shouldn't I get one, since I'm in that precinct?
Are you signed up for the e-newsletter?
Yeah.
So the e-newsletter went out last week, the first e-newsletter, and they're already pre-scheduled, so they're all each week up until Election Day.
Oh, okay. I just, it's my short, you know, going on my walk and trying to tell people to...
Sure.
Now, isn't it at the back of Kingsley?
The parking's available in the back and the front. The preferred parking is in the back. So the very last mailing that I have scheduled has a map, has a map for parking, has a map for entrance once you get into the building, how you find the space. And there will be people stationed once you enter the door at the Kingsley to direct the voters as well.
Okay, great. That would be great. Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
That's all I have, Mayor.
I had a couple of questions. This is for Sandra. There's on the register, there's a refund of tax overpayment of forty thousand.
I saw it, too.
Quite an overpayment. And then I'm just curious about CoreLogic Commercial Tax Service. Explain to me how this works and who this is going back to.
Yeah, so the homeowner, the property owner paid forty thousand dollars, but they were set up with an escrow, so they had a mortgage company that was collecting their escrow. And then CoreLogic is kind of the middleman, so CoreLogic receives the money from the mortgage companies, from numerous mortgage companies, and then they submit the money to the city. So since we received forty thousand from the homeowner, we always refund the second person that pays, and CoreLogic was who paid second. So they paid it in full, but we already had a down payment, or, you know, like a first payment of forty thousand, so that was refunded back.
CoreLogic then paid it back to the homeowner?
Yes.
Okay. And then there was a refund of a duplicate payment of fifty thousand. How does that happen?
Was that for Loretta?
Loretta, yeah.
Yeah, so that's the same thing. The homeowner or the property owner paid it, and then... And sometimes that happens when there's a sale of the property and it's kind of in between. You know, there gets a little confusion as who's going to pay it or who should pay it. So that, I think, my memory serves me, that is what happened with that situation.
Okay. Thank you. It just seemed a little odd to be such a large number.
Yeah.
And I did have a question or just a comment on the Priority Ways, the monthly service report. This is sort of like a snapshot in September. Do you think they could provide some kind of a trend where you can see how they're either getting worse or better based on the same metrics every month? Because I really don't have any idea. I just look at this and I can see...
It's the beginning.
Okay, so this is the beginning?
This is the beginning. So I don't, I don't, well, there was a prior weekly report that I talked about key performance indicators. And I think it's something that's important for the future when we, if you bid out any sort of contractor. But what I ask Priority to do is to let us know where these complaints are, what they are, break them down. It's not broken down as much as I'd like it to right now, but it's a start. It's in the packet. But I'd like to see if they were meeting industry standards from, you know, from what I've read, and there's not a lot of information on it, but industry standards would be one missed pickup per a thousand. So we have about seventeen hundred households, but we have three touches at that one household. So if you multiply that for a month, it's like twenty thousand touches throughout our whole community. And so if they, if we have, like, I believe this might, this is a little bit over the standard. I think it's like, ends up being one point seven or one point eight, whatever, percent or point one. And if it's point one percent, then it meets industry standards, and I'm trying to get them to agree with us. So that's what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to provide the information for the commission to review every month, standard or trends over time, and get a little bit better presentation here. So this is the first step.
Okay.
But certainly, if there's additional, like, one of the things, it says a hundred percent missed stop recoveries, so... And I want to find out if there's missed stops in a particular neighborhood, because...
Ours.
Right? You're bringing it up, so I'll bring it up.
Multiple people calling me.
Right. So why is that? So if we have this data every month, and I notice that, boy, it's in this, it's on X street, well, that's a problem, so why is that? And my plan is to just try to pay attention and attack it that way, by letting them know that you're falling behind on the standards that we expect you to do. And by providing the data and then providing it to you, you have, you know, some transparency that you feel like at least we're trying to do something about it, and then you can, you know, ask more questions or require more...
You've been terrific in fielding calls from residents and helping connect us with Priority, and I really appreciate that, Amy and everybody on the team. But I don't, I'm not convinced that they are taking the right steps to repair their trucks and improve their service. He's blaming the trucks on the maintenance problems, and the service is remarkably different and worse than the previous owner that he bought these exact trucks from.
Yeah, GFL did better. You're right.
So I'd like to see what he's doing to repair his trucks, to make them more reliable, because they advertise that they would add all this intel to the trucks and...
Yes.
And do that and improve the trucks themselves, and I don't, I haven't seen that improved. So this report's great, but I...
We need, yeah, we need more.
I blew the report on his repairs on his trucks, or I don't know, but I appreciate that.
So, you know, there was a, for that specific instance, when you look at the data, there was this supposed problem with trucks in August, and they have eight trucks that actually do the door side pickups. They said that they got these trucks from the prior company. They're falling apart. To your point, is that true or is it not true? But the missed pickups for the door side service did go down in September, so... But maybe we just keep an eye on that to see if that is true moving forward.
Could that be part of the...
Do they say why they're missing curbside pickups? Because there seems, there's twenty of those. And why would they miss curbside pickups?
And these, one of the things that I asked them, I'll answer your question a little bit different way. One of the things I did ask them is to provide me information on actual missed pickups, not things that were set out on time. So these are actual missed pickups.
Oh, okay. Because there's some people that don't put it out on time and miss them.
Right. So if you can verify that, now, someone forgets, they may say that they didn't set it out in time or whatever the case may be, but if they can verify that that's not true, then I said, okay. Then I would agree with you, then that would not be a legitimate complaint. But supposedly, these are legitimate complaints. I think over time, what we're going to do is we're going to compare this data with our data to make sure that the numbers are, you know, matching. And if we can, we do have the addresses. I didn't include that in here, but we do have the addresses this happened at. So our intention is to really keep a close eye on this, keep in contact with Priority on this. But no matter who's picking up the trash, we want to do this for the commission. It's something that we, you know, just recently thought about, but maybe we should have been, we should have had this in the packet all along, but I think it's at least we started it.
Great tool. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Then just one more quick thing. The email from the resident at thirty-six Hennig Ridge. Just wanted to acknowledge that, is there some action or is some discussion that needed to happen regarding that, or?
Which one?
They want their, they want the penalty.
Or the penalty?
They were late in penalty.
Oh, Amy's better.
Amy and Sandra?
I think it'd be appropriate for Sandra to... Sandra?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, this resident had contacted us saying that he had mailed his tax payment. We never received it, and then in the beginning of October, I sent out notices to those that we haven't received payment from yet, and that prompted him to contact us. And they came in that same day, paid it in full, including penalty that accrued from both September and October. But he was asking for a refund on the penalty. And our policy is that we do not, you know, refund or waive any sort of penalty, and if that's requested, it must go to the city commission.
Do we get a lot of late payments?
Yes, we do. We sent out, I think, a hundred and fifty letters after, in October. So even in September, we were receiving late notices with penalties.
And we charged the penalty?
Yes.
So we would normally charge the penalty unless there was something like an extenuating circumstance, an illness or a death or an emergency or something?
I've never had those situations happen. The only time that penalty was ever removed or waived was clerical error. And, but other than that, we do not remove the penalty. was clerical error. And, but other than that, um, we do not remove the penalty.
Because I imagine, I mean, they said they were out of town the whole month, and they couldn't, they couldn't check to see if their bank account was charged. I mean, I would imagine a lot of people in our city are out of town for months at a time.
Yes.
Well, most people can check their account line.
That's what I mean. They should be able to check it from out of town.
Mark, can you weigh in here a little bit on this one?
I, with every community, we represent, um, any type of refund of a penalty is not provided. Um, even on, you know, some of the fees, water fees, stuff like that. Um, so, uh, your, your policy's not inconsistent with most municipalities.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Do we need to bring that to a vote, do we?
No.
No?
Is it just...
No.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Mark.
Any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Um, may I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, including the minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty-five commission meeting, and the minutes from the September ninth, twenty twenty-five closed session meeting?
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Now we will open the floor to public comment. If you wish to address the commission, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and please limit your remarks to three minutes.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Cynthia Canty. I live at seven seven nine Windemere Court. And I think we can all agree that one of the greatest pleasures of summertime in Michigan, and here in Bloomfield Hills, is being able to sit out and enjoy an evening in your yard. And that is something that I and my neighbors cannot do, because we live along Woodward. And living along Woodward means that you have souped up cars and revved up motorcycles roaring up and down Woodward without a break for hours, unbroken. So I can't sit outside, often can't get to sleep because this noise continues until after midnight. This is a, a quality of life issue. It is a safety issue in our community, and it is getting worse every, every year. Um, I went through the minutes of the commission meetings from April, May, June, July, and August. Prime summer season and prime drag racing. And there wasn't one word mentioned by any city official, public safety official, or citizen about this problem, that, as I said, is worse every single year. When, when we call the police non-emergency line to ask for help, the typical response is, well, we'll send out a car. Well, to those of us who live along Woodward, that feels insufficient, inadequate, and kind of feels like an out of sight, out of mind problem for city officials and public safety officials. If you're not living with that all night long, maybe you don't have a sense of how bad it is, and how every year it's getting worse. You know, we pay our taxes faithfully, obey the fifty mile an hour speed limit on Woodward, but it feels like we're forgotten, in that the, especially realizing it's not been addressed at all, all summer long. And it seems kind of like it's been easy to slide into a default position of, well, what are you going to do? So the question I'd like to pose to, to everyone in public safety, and here as our city officials, is, what can you do better for us? You know, what can we do to confront a problem that we're living with night after night after night? And I decided, at least we're going to get a citizen on the record, and maybe a few more, um, about this issue, to kind of help you understand, if you don't live along Woodward, and you're, you're at home, you're not hearing what we're hearing until twelve, one in the morning, and, um, oh, we'll try to send a car, just isn't cutting it anymore. I thank you very much.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for coming. We have, at great lengths over the last year, um... Talked about it, taken it to the state, taken it to officials at other levels, because Woodward is a state-run boulevard. And we are hand tied. The, um, officers are not allowed to measure the sound. You, you, you have to issue a, uh, license based on the decimals, and the decimals don't... We don't have the tools to properly arrest them. I even read an article in the Wall Street Journal about this mechanism that measures and automatically issues a ticket. And I sent that to the commission, sent that around. I said, we should implement this. But the laws of Michigan don't allow us to issue a ticket without a police officer present. And this automatic ticketing is, um, only allowed if, if it's, um, if they have cameras on school buses, and they have cameras at construction sites. But they will not allow us to do it for noise ordinance on Woodward. We've, we've tried multiple things. We've approached multiple state people, uh, put together long documentation, called, emailed, called. They come in. I just spoke with representative from the state last week, and I brought up the issue again. And they said, well, there's nothing we can do. I said, there's got to be something we can do. I need you to bring it again to, you know, the proper people. And they said, well, they're going over the budget right now. It won't be something they can bring up. So it's at the forefront of every person's mind at this, behind this desk. And even if it's not brought up by a citizen, we understand. I, I hear it where we are. So I, I hear what you hear. And it is, it is, um, prolific, and it's unfortunate that there are these mechanisms that help cars sound louder. And, you know, you hope with the Woodward Dream Cruise, you know, it subsides, but it seems to be, you know...
The Dream Cruise goes off for eight weeks.
Exactly. I agree.
It starts in March.
I disagree with the Dream Cruise, to be honest.
Oh, I know. It's, 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 um, a very long season, too long. It's...
And it's not just the noise. There's, I mean, they, I, it's speed. And we've got some other folks that I had, wanted to say something.
Let's hear from some, a couple more. Yes, please.
My name is Suzanne Mellon, and I live at one six four Kirkwood Court, in the same area that Cindy Canty was speaking about. And I'm here in support of, really, our entire neighborhood, of twenty-two homes in that area that experienced that. Just to reiterate, I think what Cindy said really presented the picture in totality. But it is not one that is just a once on the weekends. It's throughout the, it's throughout the week. And I think the part that's noticeable, because when even I go out at night and coming back, there isn't a visibility, a presence of the public safety from Bloomfield Hills, um, really going along Woodward during that timeframe. At least that I've noted, any time that I've been out. Again, I can have a very limited night. I'm not, I'm not cruising Woodward along with that crew. Um, but I would say that it is one that is, is noticeable, and for people like myself that like to sleep with maybe a window open when it's a nice night, you can't really do that anymore. It's just really uncomfortable. And I've lived in cities, in urban areas, where it has not been the noise level that what I notice here in Bloomfield Hills. So I think we bring it to the commission. Our entire neighborhood is feeling this way, and I expect we're not the only ones.
You're not. In fact, we've collaborated with, with Birmingham, Birminghamdale. And there's this whole collective effort with all the city officials all along Woodward.
Right. But maybe there needs to be more public safety visibility during the evening hours, when this is most, most rampant. Uh, because they're really using it as a, almost like a Speedway, um, that is really pretty obvious, um, to most of us. So I'm adding my voice to it, to be, um, on your record.
Thank you.
Because I think it is an important one that we want the commission to address. And I know it's a difficult plan, um, and it'd be nice to have a way where you could do the decibels, the looking at the noise. But the reality is, that's the culture we're living in now, where they don't want any mufflers, that they just want to be loud. That's part of the process. So, but I think visibility, and I think they're speeding along that way, too, um, in that regard. To say the least, right?
Thank you. My name's Jim Stargard. I live at one seventy-two Kirkwood Court, same neighborhood as my fellow board members. Um, I've lived here for twelve years, and it's gotten worse. Uh, it used to be just like two weeks around the Dream Cruise. Uh, it's not just a noise issue. It's a safety issue. They are not going fifty miles an hour up and down Woodward. You have a two-mile drag strip there. Because between Law, um, um, Horton and Long, Long Lake, there's nothing to stop them. And, you know, we love our place. Trust me, we, we love you guys. But a car out there at two o'clock in the afternoon is not what we're looking for. We need cars out there between five and midnight. We had cameras during the Dream Cruise. I don't know who's, what those things were. I don't know what they were doing. I don't know if it was TV or what. There were some things, um, telescopic cameras up there. Um, you know, maybe that's the answer. And if noise isn't enough to fix the problem, it's a safety issue. We, we are blessed to have a turn-in, to go into Windemere Hills. But we, I mean, trying to pull out of our place is a nightmare, oftentimes. That's a safety issue, more than anything. The noise is an amazing inconvenience. Now, these are million-dollar homes, and we're sitting there, we can't sit on our deck at night and talk, because we can't hear each other. You know, something's got to be done. And I appreciate you trying to do things, but maybe there's other ways we can attack it. Attack it from a safety standpoint. The people are going eighty, ninety, a hundred, up and down Woodward on our side, because there is no light on our side. And something needs to be done to fix that. And I appreciate your attention, and your attention to this matter. But, um, it, it is a serious issue, and it's a quality of life issue. And for the, the taxes we pay and all that we do, and the kind of community we want to live in, you know, you, if you're trying to sell your house and somebody comes over and hears motorcycles coming down the street, it could impact your property values. And that's unacceptable in a community like ours. Thank you.
I agree. Thank you very much.
My next question? Hi, Matt.
Uh, my name is Brian Dietz, D.I.E.T.Z. I'm at one seven four Kirkwood Court. Uh, I don't want to pile on too much, but I want to pile on a little bit.
Okay.
Uh, so the distinctions that are the things that I'd like to emphasize that my neighbors are making, uh, there are two issues. There's noise, and there's speeding. And I think, you know, eighty, a hundred miles an hour is a far underestimate of what is happening. I think that that stretch of our city, from Horton to Long Lake, is unique in that Woodward corridor. There aren't traffic lights. There isn't the heavy Birmingham police presence that you get in, in Birmingham. The lights are dark, and there is no question that these cars are exceeding well over, motorcycles exceeding well over a hundred miles an hour. The noise, the purposefully souped-up noise. Uh, so you have a physical safety issue. You have a noise issue. And, uh, uh, I, 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 I think that focused enforcement, if that stretch of the road became known as a place that if you are doing this kind of behavior on a Saturday or a Friday night, you are going to get ticketed. If that was known, the people would stop doing it. They would say, oh, I'm going to get a ticket if I do that behavior on that stretch of road. So if you just had a line of police cars and generated revenue for ticketing, boom, 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 ticketed people, it would stop, because they would know they were going to get ticketed. And respectfully, I hear you saying that you're talking to all these other people, and they're telling you sadly they can't help you.
That's just not a good...
It can't stop there.
We're not stopping.
We have to find another target.
We are not stopping, along with all the other communities down the, down the stretch of Woodward.
And so I think the most important thing I wanted to emphasize, different from my neighbors, is the opportunity for targeted enforcement on noise ordinances and the speeding, I think would send a powerful message to the people who are doing this, that this is no longer acceptable in this stretch of Woodward from Horton to Long Lake.
Thank you very much. Anyone else?
Good evening. Sean Canty, and I live with Cindy, so I'm not going to repeat what she has done, because she's a lot more verbal and can descriptive than I am. But I am curious, when I started looking at some of the legislation that was pending in the state of Michigan for, uh, I think it's House fifty-six ninety-six, a local representative put forward, about noise and speed on Woodward Avenue. And it just seems to have gone nowhere. That's, uh, it's been kind of stonewalled or something. So why? Like, what's the city of Bloomfield Hills doing to push that? Birmingham has gotten a lot more aggressive, as they have in the last couple of years in Birmingham.
They have put a billboard up, but they haven't gotten more aggressive than we have, in other ways.
Well, I don't think that more police visible in Birmingham. And maybe it's been just perception-wise, but we don't see that necessarily, as everybody has said here in Bloomfield Hills. And I think the residents of, of, along the, uh, Woodward corridor deserve better. And I think the city of Bloomfield Hills kind of always lets them, the residents, to, to take action to fix it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Yeah, um, I'm just going to give credit where credit's due on this one. You know, uh, we've, since I've been on the commission, we've heard this, and by the way, I hear it. I don't live behind, right next to it, but my husband and I love to sit outside in the summertime, and we're just like, Woodward's like a mile from us, and yet we can still hear it. So I, we hear it. Every, I think everybody hears it. But we have, um, as the mayor said, we talked about the decibel, trying to do that. You know, I hate to say it, but when we go to political officials and ask for it, like senators, state senators, reps, everything, we've, we've all met with them, and they're just like, not going to take it on, not going to take it on. Um, you know, they just say, we're a car, you know, we're a car. This is kind of their, their answer to us is, we're an automobile, automobile state. You know, that's sort of people's livelihood. That's sort of the generic answer. There was one that you're talking about, and she met with us a lot. She met with, um, I know she met with Dave, and it's Donnie Steele. And she has come to our meetings, and she just would say, I hear you. Dave met with her numerous times. And she actually is the one who was trying to, is trying to push that through. It's not going very fast, unfortunately, but, um, please know, you're not the only residents. We're all affected by it. And I think you talked about, I, you heard me talk about the speeding and the fatal accidents that are happening, and what the chief is doing. I, I'm like, looking over you, Cindy, going, I think we need to have the chief come up...
I'd like him to come up and speak as well.
And tell, you know, I mean, he can tell you what he's been doing, and what they're doing, and then, I think, you know, what you can do with them. Go ahead, chief.
I know I can talk, so I will try to be brief. But I want to, I want to cover some things. So, uh, I was brought here in, uh, I had the honor of being brought here in December. So this is my first summer. Um, but I want to tell you what we did, uh, just this year. I know this is an issue. Now, I can tell you about my history. I serve as, I'm the legislative committee for the Michigan Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm on the governor's task force, or the, uh, traffic safety committee. Your frustrations are as great as mine. Probably not, because you live here, you have to deal with it all the time. I work here, but, uh, I like my job, and I want to keep it. So I'm doing everything I can, uh, with the, with, with our staff and with the existing laws. The thing of the, the, the constitution, the constitution of Michigan, the ordinances, so we are doing everything. But I want to just give you guys a perspective, um, from our end, because people typically don't see what we see. Um, just like we don't see what you see, because we're not sitting in your backyard on your decks, suffering through all of this. The, the prior action that took place a couple of years ago, where enforcement was pushed, all of those tickets were dismissed, and it opened the city up to liability. So we don't want to do something outside the bounds of that constitutional, uh, prosecution for traffic citations. And I want to give you a little bit, it's like an onion. There's many, very many levels. Some of these cars that, where we go to stop them, they have automatic sound, uh, actuators in the mufflers that open them up from the factory. Mustangs, Camaros, Chargers, they can open these actuators, or have them installed either way. So that when they go by us, they're at a decibel of a hundred and twenty, or a hundred and twenty-two, something ridiculous. And then when we stop them, they're at ninety. And then we have to get a warrant, you know, we, we have to either impound the car, or force the vehicle to operate that way. So there's a lot of different things that go into a prosecution for the sound alone, um, that are, I would like to, if you guys want, meet, and we could talk outside, so that we're not, um, spending a lot of time in front of the commission, not that they... that are, I would like to, if you guys want, meet and we could talk outside, so that we're not, um, spending a lot of time in front of the commission, not that they, they, I want them to hear and they need to hear, but I, I don't wanna, uh, I, I don't wanna cut you guys short, you guys have a timeline, and I'll give you, I'll give you all night, uh, we can stand out there and talk all night. The other factor is, um, people don't stop for us, the people that are doing this. And I have one tragic situation, that since I came here as chief, I am pushing for us to be more aggressive and to not only do, take enforcement action, but you have that, the person has to wanna stop. The person has to be afraid of being penalized. And I've argued this, I've been a police chief in my prior job for thirty years, we were arguing on this, people don't stop. And what it is, is agencies are not pursuing, because of the liability, the danger. When we had this fa- fatal motorcycle accident in June, we weren't chasing him, we couldn't keep up with him. He went across the, the, a median, because he came down Woodward at a hundred and fifty miles an hour. So when we got tactically in place and we positioned right to try to stop a motorcycle, can weave in, in between traffic where a car cannot. So we have to be taking into account not only the safety of the general public, our officers, and unfortunately even the criminal that is operating in such a reckless, dangerous manner. And it's a series of escalations, because what the drivers do is they wanna up how dangerous their activity is. So a hundred and fifty miles an hour might not be dangerous enough, he might, for example, a motorcyclist who has a helmet on and can't be identified, to pursue any kind of a fleeing and looting charge with the tinted windows in the cars. All of these, when I say these are all elements of that onion that make it more difficult. I'm not saying we're not trying, and I'll get to that. So when this motorcyclist who had a helmet on, who we couldn't identify him, also had a fraudulent plate on his vehicle, his motorcycle, because when we went to make the death notification, we went to the wrong house. And we had to find the right house. So when we initiated our pursuit and it grew too dangerous, we backed off, per our policy, per our training. You know who didn't back off? That motorcyclist. That motorcyclist went southbound on Woodward at eighty miles an hour, threw a solid red light at the turnaround north of Long Lake. Do you know what he did once he got through that red light? He hit the accelerator, and he went through a solid red light at Long Lake, and a eastbound vehicle, an SUV driven by a woman, he hit her front driver's tire, and there was a, there was eighteen inches of impact. That mean that motorcycle entered into the frame of that vehicle by eighteen inches. The front left wheel was launched off of that vehicle and landed in Bill's front, uh, parking lot. That driver then flew, the motorcyclist flew off and, uh, and was tragically killed by his own doing. A foot and a half over to the other, w- w- he would have penetrated into the interior compartment and killed that woman. That is the challenge that we face. I'm not sitting here trying to tell you, go easy on us, we have a job to do, and, and trust me, please, I will demonstrate it to you. We are gonna earn it, we are gonna do this, but it is not as simple and straightforward. So what we've done, uh, some of the tactics we've done, we've employed, we've in, we've increased our patrols out on the, uh, out onto Woodward specifically in the evening hours. Just a couple of numbers, and, and I'm just giving you data because data supports my word, you may not believe it until I fix it, so I have to give you these, 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 uh, these talking points. Selective, uh, we have had a forty-four point three percent increase in traffic citations issued during the same time from the year prior. Okay? We participated in what's called the Hundred, Hundred Deadliest Days of Summer, it's a campaign through Michigan that I brought here, and it's, it's the Hundred Days, uh, Hundred Deadliest Days of Summer, basically starting in, um, May, going through June, July, and August. Um, also sixteen, sixteen point three, uh, percent decrease in traffic complaints from Woodward alone. The Woodward stretch, not anywhere else, just on Woodward. And, and probably the biggest thing we're, we're proud of is there's been a twenty-two point six percent decrease in collisions, crashes. So that's about a, that's a significant amount of decrease in crashes. And I believe that is because we have a heightened level of, of, of visibility. More importantly, action enforcement and traffic stops. Now, we don't ticket everybody we stop out there. I would hate to think that we would stop you out there, um, but if we would, never. See, I appreciate that. But we're gonna take action, and, and what I mean by that is, is we're getting better. One of the, the, the great things about our agencies, we're fully staffed now. And we're, we were, we were stretched thin, we were, we were down, but now we're fully stretched, and we have greater ability to deploy a specific car to Woodward now. And we're getting there. So do I think this year was good enough? No, and I'm sorry about that. Um, but next year will be better, and the next year will be better, and the next year will be better.
Could I ask, has there been consideration or has it been tried to get support from the Michigan State Police since this is a state, uh, role?
So, um, if you wanna know the truth, um, the Oakland Chiefs of Police met, uh, last week, and the lieutenant, uh, that runs the Metro North Post said that they are over forty-five percent down in staffing from five years ago. They will not respond to traffic accidents on six ninety-six, they will not do traffic enforcement on six ninety-six. They will not do anything but prioritize policing to the areas where by state law they have to pu- police, and they will be limited in whatever they can support the local agencies for. Um, do I think MSP is going to deploy an officer to Woodward? Absolutely not, because they are barely staffing, um, their areas where they are by law required to enforce police action in those other agencies, or those other jurisdictions.
Or those county sheriffs.
Sheriff, the sheriff, I, I speak frequently with the sheriff, and the sheriff will deploy vehicles down here to support us, um, when possible. Um, but, like, I don't know if you've heard my statement, uh, police agencies across the state, and if not the nation, are understaffed. And there's a difference between operationally staffed and, 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 um, budgeted, or, uh, or staffed on a, on a paper level, if you will. Like the young gentleman I, I introduced today, he won't be operationally effective by himself for another four months, for, through training, right? So we are way ahead of that, um, I'm proud to say we're, we're way ahead of it, and we're not taking our foot, I don't wanna say off the pedal, 'cause that would be bad. But we're staying, we're staying, we're, we're, we are, we are one hundred percent focused on this. Um, amongst other things, we can, uh, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, and we will. But, um, some of the things that we're taking on is we're getting a more aggressive, uh, pursuit policy. Do you know who I have to work with for that? Legal representation for the city. I don't wanna put the city in, as much as I wanna fix this problem, I don't wanna open the city up to greater liability. I don't want people hurt, I don't want that woman in her Cadillac SUV killed or hurt. Um, so I don't want any of my officers killed or hurt. I want the quality of life for my citizens to be better, and that's what I'm gonna work, work towards. Now, give me another year. Just give me one more year, no. Um, that, that's exactly what we, we're, we're looking for. We're, we're, we're doing research on cameras. The legalities of the cameras, the infrastructure, those cameras that you saw up there, they were for security, operational security, uh, live feeds for the event of Woodward Dream Cruise, that's it. That was all that was for.
Other cities, like, um, expressways and motorways and the like, can use cameras.
For, for what?
For speeding.
Oh, yeah.
No.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Uh, if...
Oh, yeah.
In, in Pennsylvania, yes.
Not in our state.
In Michigan, there's only...
But I'm saying that's an opportunity to push that, if you were, everybody's understaffed.
Yes.
Okay, and from the safety standpoint, it seems like that's a reasonable approach.
So right now, we have two options, the legislate, the legislatures, legislature has pushed through only two, um, enforceable tickets off of cameras right now. One was off an existing law, which was a passing a school bus. That law has been in effect, that a school bus driver could see something, give some information, and police officers could issue a ticket sight unseen. Now they can enforce that with a camera. The other one is speed, specific speed enforcement in construction zones regulated by MSP, and it's only, uh, it's only within a certain mile, they will allow ten miles over the speed limit before they take action. And the first one is a warning. It still has to work through the state of Michigan, the police, uh, the Michigan State Police, just like in, uh, the only school district that has those cameras right now are, are Detroit. And they work with their own police department to issue those citations. So the, uh, the, the amount of information that's getting out there, um, be optimistic about, but we are very pessimistic about the true application and getting it done at the ground level, where we can actually enforce it, and then, uh, and then it be backed up by the courts.
Was there a lobby that I was talking about? My wife Heather was asking, and I suspect I know the answer, because you talked about the state's control of Woodward, but is it possible to get any more traffic lights put on that stretch between Corton and Long Lake to kinda interrupt the flow of...
Like in hospital... We, Dave, we looked in, yeah, we looked into that, we, Dave, remember we looked into that?
You know, some, sometimes, uh, there, there has been some studies that when you add traffic lights, people stop, then they have to start again. But actually increases noise, and, uh, this kinda harkens back to a light that was put on, uh, Chesterfield on Corton. And so that light actually created more noise. And so I don't know if the, if that's what, I just, I'm recalling from my days in, in your position. And, uh, that was a, a study you looked into, so actually it could, it could create more noise in front of your place, so...
Yeah, they did say that.
Yeah, I was gonna just, I, I just wondered, I, I noticed, you, you mind, chief?
Oh, right ahead, sir, I was just gonna...
I want, the, uh, I, I think the chief and the public safety department wants you to feel comfortable with that, the cars are out there. And I, I noticed you had mentioned that you look at these, uh, minutes and reports. And, um, maybe, maybe the chief can add into his, uh, monthly report, when these cars are out there at night, and then you can compare it to, so you feel that we're not just telling you that we're doing it, that you, maybe you see some increase. And, you know, I, I'm a, I'm a big proponent personally of, uh, just visibility and deterrence through just the lights going on. As the chief says, you don't always stop people, the right tickets, but when you're stopping people, it does, it does slow people down.
Could you even park a, a, a police car, right?
Light going?
In like the most...
Sooner or later, someone's gonna call and say, there's something wrong with that car out there.
Oh, yeah, so...
Somebody hurt.
Yeah, but I've seen that.
You, so we do not park on the medians. We do not, other cities park on the medians, and that causes problems of a different nature, but we don't park on...
Gotta be a little side, something.
Well, you... That, we, we try to, but it's, it's, it's a bit ner- unnerving, because drivers see the cars, we've had a couple of near misses with accidents, and if you turn the lights on and you're not actually enforcing the law, then you run into some situations where that, uh, move over one lane for the law, a, a law enforcement officer, would we be looked at as baiting people or sitting there with the lights on and then trying to stop people that don't, uh, uh, yield and move over one lane to an emergency vehicle? Um, we could cause some problems with that, we've tried that before in the past, maybe not here, but in my previous life as chief, and it's caused some concerns or some other things we weren't looking at. Um, we never want to detract away from safety and the efficient flow of tra- traffic. So we're balancing all of that with quality of life, visibility. Um, some of the, some of the, some of the, um, issues with the increased visibility is they run right on site now from us. Our pursuits have skyrocketed since I've been here. But, but, and it's primarily motorcycles. Um, we have motorcycles, we have groups of motorcycles that will impede our pursuing the original motorcycle, and then, you know, we come across a motorcycle on its side, crash down the road. Um, it just, it, it's, this problem has been festering for years. It's been a cu- accumulation of personal accountability, lack of police department staffing, lack of part, police department willingness to pursue, um, because of the liability with pursuits. Um, a, a lot of different things, and I will go into that later, if you guys want me to come and do a speech or talk to me offline. It's just a lot, and I can go, I could be, I could keep us all here till eight AM tomorrow, talking, if you want. Um, and, and I, I will, but I don't, I, I think my boss might be mad at me in the future.
We, we appreciate it.
Do you have a question in the background?
Uh, yeah, I have a quick question, or just a suggestion, um, I think there's a lot of data that we're missing from this subject, especially in terms of noise concern. I think maybe it'd be beneficial to maybe line some industrial lights along the side of Woodward to see the number and frequency of how many vehicles are going above the necessary decibel limit, especially at night. And we can use that data to kinda see when this frequency really passes. We know it's summer, obviously, but it would just be helpful to see, like, when it'd be most useful to put a police car, or, uh, what areas would be most beneficial from sound modification, uh, technology, and just, I just really think we should collect more data on this subject before we make a decision on, uh, putting more police cars out there or, uh, putting other enforcement measures, so that's...
If, if, if you know of a technology that right now is financially reasonable...
Yeah, I, I agree.
Um, because if it's not implementable and it's not sustainable, it's not worth doing.
Exactly.
So if you can't afford to put it in, or if you can't afford to keep it going, it's not worth it. And what I mean by that is, uh, we'll, we'll accept any idea. Um, so if you know some technology, I'll give you my card outside and you can send it to me, and I'm, I'm all ears. We've, everything, um, the mayor, the, the city commission, the city manager, citizens send my way, we look and do, we do our due diligence and look into it. Um, a- and we will continue to do so, because that's what good, you know, administration d- does. But it has to be, I, I can't come here with a, you know, the, one of the, one of the recommendations that somebody sent us was a two-tiered technology system that is based on an, uh, uh, an automated license plate reader. And that's combined with a audible decimal, decimal system. And each one of those, uh, uh, each one of those cameras right now, of, for example, a flock camera, it's about five thousand dollars per year per camera. Okay? And all that does is regis, all that does, that does is zero enforcement. It will not identify, I'm sorry, it'll identify a vehicle by make or license plate, that's it. It will not mail a ticket, it will not track a ticket, it will not prove speed, it will not do any of that. You have to then marry that with a secondary system, the dec- decimal automated system, or a reader, that then tracks that. And each one of those systems were about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Back when they were new and they were trying to get them out. So typically, they're cheaper when they're trying to get them out, when Flock started, it's about two thousand dollars a camera, it's five thousand dollars a camera. So I mean, that's how the technology, and then you have, that's one camera on one spot. Um, in my previous agency, we had forty thou, forty cameras, it was a hundred thousand dollars at the introductory offer per year. You have to look into how tall the camera is, the pole, if the pole is, is, if the pole is California or M, M, Michigan DOT approved. You have to do all of those factors, so that goes into that implementation. When I had that system, I bought it in twenty twenty-one, it wasn't implemented and up and running until twenty twenty-four.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Respectfully, I'm not sure, I think you might be making a slightly different point. I think you're responding to it from the perspective of how might we issue citations, and I think you're bringing up the point of how do we collect the data that helps us better understand the problems, so that we can then have more thoughtful and strategic approaches to attacking the problem?
Um, yeah, but I also think he kind of addressed it, if that's what you're saying, 'cause, um, there's, I wanna say, it's not two separate issues here, but they, they're in one, but there's the safety concern of speeding, and then there's the actual noise issue which applies to residents. And as the, um, chief thinks that, you know, some of these vehicles do actuate their sound based on when they're running or being stagnant, and uh, that's another factor that we might just have to live with, to figure out how to maybe sound for some neighborhoods.
So we, we, you know, just to go off of your data, we're, we're, um, you know, detectives and police officers could always be better. We know where it's happening, all along Woodward. We know when it's happening, all the time. So we're pretty good, we're pretty good on what we need to do. Um, and, and, and that, that's it. Now, will we be able to staff a, a, a specific detail out there twenty-four seven? That's our goal. Our goal is to have somebody out there all the time. Not every minute, not every second, but all the time. If they're not doing a run where they're answering a, a call for medical attention, or a crash, or an alarm, or whatever it is, every extra minute, they're out there deployed on, on Woodward, trying to do what's right, and keep our citizens and our ci, our, our residential areas safe, so...
And like they were saying, I think it's not, the key time is five PM to two in the morning. Right?
You can't go that fast during lunch hour.
I, I very often get the meetings at this, I wanted to express my appreciation of the honesty and your answers.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it, and to all of you, we're sure...
That's okay.
We'll be talking more.
We appreciate it.
I would say to you too, I can vouch for them one night, it was, 'cause we've been having this issue, and so there, there was a task force with our police and the Birmingham and the Royal Oak, everybody up and down. And I happened to be coming up Woodward one Friday night this summer, and I'm like, I'm seeing all these police, like, on the side of the road. And I'm driving, I go through Birmingham, and I'm looking at all these poli, I go, I feel so safe right now. And I like, you know, drive, and I even went through Woodward, and they did have, they worked, the, all these different police departments worked together on Friday and Saturday nights to have, like, that presence of, hey, all the way. Now, can you do it every single Friday and Saturday night, or Monday through Friday, you wish you could? But there, there have been... But there, there have been, they have been working on a task force together, so it just doesn't happen every night. Yeah.
Including in the meeting minutes or whatever going forward on my budget to both would be helpful.
We will, we will do that for sure. And please, thank you for coming, and we would welcome you to come back anytime, okay?
Sir, in the back?
When I saw no citizens recognized, I saw the budget brought in at eight oh three. Any comments, public, no public comments, passed at eight oh three. We need some citizens.
We need some, we like it, we like it when you come.
If we could maybe enlist you to help us writing letters to the administration.
Well, that, in fact, I, I meant to add, what would we help?
That would be very effective and it would help our, our cause as well.
And now the prices also.
Sir?
Does anyone have any other comments about Woodward before I search subjects?
No, go ahead.
Um, I have a question, um, and this was actually raised up by my dad.
Um, well, I'm sorry, we, um,
Can you introduce yourself?
You have to give your, and give your address.
Sure.
Yes, please. We have to have it for the minutes, so, because we got people residents looking at our minutes.
This one's a lame one, I'm wrong, this kind of sucks.
Hi, everyone. My name is Nathan Alchi. I live at 263 Chestnut Circle. Um, just had a quick question for everyone. Um, I understand there is some architectural design choices or guidelines for residents in the city of Bloomfield Hills. One of those being that you can't face garages towards the street, right? Is that right?
I actually personally thought that was the case when we were building our house on Haverhill, and I, I was told otherwise, but maybe you could clarify.
Uh, it's, 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 uh, not required, is it?
I, I thought it was not allowed, but it's just a preferred, I think it's just preferred.
It is not regulated in the ordinance. It is, it may be regulated by some associations, also by some homeowners associations, it may be regulated.
Got it. So I'd have to bring up that concern with them, pretty much.
You're welcome to finish your conversation. I'm sure the commissioner would be happy to hear what you have to say.
Yeah, so I, my, my, I guess my dad said something about the city council or something about the regulations about not being able to build a front-facing garage. And I guess I just wanted to come here to get some clarification on, well, it sounds like, is that the case or would that be?
We prefer not. It's, it's very frowned upon, but I don't believe there's legislation in place.
Gotcha.
We don't really have an ordinance, but we have several, where he might hear, have heard this from us, we have several very strong homeowner associations
I see.
that have deed restrictions. So like I live in a, in an association with 120 houses, and you cannot have a facing, front-facing garage. We, our deed restrictions do that. So there are a lot of associations that have that, but as an ordinance itself, no. So if you're gonna build a house, you better check with
And if you are looking for a variance and come before the planning commission or zoning, it's highly likely they will ask you to reorient your garage.
Gotcha, okay.
If you want to be granted a variance.
That's pretty much it. Thank you, guys, appreciate it.
Does that help?
Yeah, that was, yeah.
Okay. No problem.
Any other? Bye, thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Margaret Baxter. I live at 990 Burnham, and full disclosure, I am married to Brad.
Oh.
Um, I have a lighter topic for us tonight, not the Woodward noise, which I agree is an issue, but I want to talk about parks and recreation. Um, I'm a Bloomfield resident, longtime resident, and parents of three children who graduated from Bloomfield Hills, um, schools. And I also serve on the board of directors of the Friends of Bowers Farm, which is a nonprofit that supports programming and community engagement at the farm. I'm here tonight to talk about two of our community's great assets, Bowers School Farm and Johnson Nature Center, though they are not in Bloomfield Hills proper. They are a valuable part of our community and offer both educational and recreational opportunities for residents. Both are currently owned and run by Bloomfield Hills Schools. Um, Bowers Farm, located in Bloomfield Township, is a 93-acre work, 93-acre working farm that has served as a hands-on classroom for decades. Thousands of students visit it every year to learn about agriculture, food systems, and environmental science. And families from all over the region come for events like Fall Fest and the Winter Park and Open Barn Days. Johnson Nature Center is a 40-acre natural area with trails, a pond, and wildlife enclosures. It's also used by students from across the district for outdoor science learning, and it's open to the public for hiking, maple sugaring, and community programs. Together, these two sites provide unique learning experiences that connect students and families to nature in the middle of our suburban Oakland County. I don't know if you may have heard, but Bloomfield Hills Schools and Oakland County Parks are talking about a partnership, a possible partnership to, to ensure long-term sustainability for both properties. The idea is pretty straightforward. Bloomfield Hills Schools would continue to own the sites and lead all educational programming, while Oakland County Parks would bring its expertise in recreation, maintenance, and public access. As a side note, I'd like to mention that there are many other examples of this kind of partnership that exists right now, including Farmington Hills Heritage Park, Rochester Hills Blumer Park, and Pontiac's Hawthorne Park and School, which is now called Pontiac Parks. The collaboration could bring long-term investment and operational stability, expanded recreational opportunities for residents, see around programming, and improved accessibility, and new ways for students and families to engage with nature and agriculture. The Friends of Bowers Farm and the Friends of Johnson Nature Center both enthusiastically support these conversations. We believe this is a forward-thinking way to preserve what makes these places special while setting them up for future growth. I'd encourage everyone here and everyone watching to take the public survey, which is in the field right now, and share your thoughts. These are treasured community spaces that belong to all of us, and public input is, is an important part of the process. Thanks for your time and your ongoing commitment to our community. I'm happy to, happy to answer any questions you may have. And I prepared a leave behind with additional information, including information about the survey and two upcoming open houses that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Appreciate your time.
I'd like to leave, I'd like the, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. It's nice to meet you.
Yes. Anyone else in the audience like to speak? Um, we'll go on, move on to regular business, the waste and recycling contract.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I, I produced a memorandum about solid waste removal in our city. And what I tried to do is put together some information that I had about potential waste removal companies. And some, uh, some of the comments that they've provided to us with what they could provide our city. I'm not sure if you've had a chance to review this memorandum, but, um, what we've, what I've done recently is I've talked to Priority Waste, our current waste contractor. Um, talked to them about our, the issues that we have with them. And if they were to continue on with us and to bid, uh, or continue their contract, either by, uh, the commission directing the city administration to go out to bid, or to extend the contract, some of the things that would be required. I also did the same thing with waste management. Um, and we additionally talked with Runco Waste, Car Trucking, Community Disposal Service, and Republic Services. Also checked in the regional area with SACRA. We use SACRA for our, our weight, our hazardous waste. What SACRA does, uh, they're, they're, um, they are a actual municipal corporation. It's a cooperative effort between 12 different municipalities. And they use three separate, um, trash removal companies, but they only provide curb-side service. And, um, so there's, when we've talked, Amy and I really kind of took this on and talked to as many people as were interested in talking to us about this subject. But there's a few things that we found. One is that not everybody will provide the door-side service that the city, I think, is
Can I just interrupt? You didn't mention Runco Waste, which does offer all of those things, the curb-side, door-side, and inside services.
Yes, yeah. Well, they may. They said that they may, they may do that. Um, Runco Waste is a little bit different. They, they, uh, provide service to, um, to, and matter of fact, it was Commissioner McCarthy's, uh, recommendations to check into them. So we checked into them again, and they do provide service to Cranbrook, but they're not a big residential, uh, service provider. Um, so I'm not sure if they provide this residential service to anybody else, are they more commercial?
They provide residential service to small homeowners associations who are pockets of communities. His response to me was he was interested in getting into the market to have a full, one full municipality. So, um, I did not gather from the conversation that they had someone that they could point to that we could call, say, you know, Ferndale and say, do you use Runco? They, he said they do pockets of homeowners associations.
So that would be a concern, maybe, uh, but certainly something to think about with, I guess what we're asking the commission to do is uh, direct the city staff to either work towards a new contract with, directly with Priority Waste, or authorize us to prepare an issue, an RFP, for waste collection services, so we can test the market, see what's out there. Um, and we are kind of running into a time constraint because, um, Priority Waste, uh, the, the contract is up March 31st, 2026. And we're pushing right up against the time. We should be letting them know if we're going to, um, you know, look for other services, so.
What would preclude us from still taking it up to RFP, including them, so they know that there's competition?
Yeah, no, I think it's a good idea.
At least we have better service for six months until March.
Well, I didn't provide my opinion in this, but if, if you're
Yes, please.
My opinion would be, why not put it out for, for bid? Because then you're gonna learn what's out there. If we develop, um, a pretty solid RFP, and I, I believe our city attorney has some examples of that. We kind of weave in some of these key performance indicators, and then we see who can handle it and who can, uh, who's interested in bidding. And we'll, we'll see where the pricing's at, we'll see, and then we can bring that back to the commission, uh, for further discussion and a decision.
I just wanted to add something, and it's a little, slightly unrelated, but it's related. And that was, I'm hearing a lot of people complaining to us and saying, why did you choose Priority? We are doing a disservice to the city residents. And even at the, um, uh, the recent forum that, that we had, where there were candidates who were running for city commission, it was mentioned, it was brought up, and we were criticized for choosing Priority and for having a contract with them. And I just wanted to remind everybody and actually put on the record that we didn't choose Priority. We had a contract with GFL, a very good contract for eight years. And when I was mayor, it came up for renewal, and Dave and Amy and I met with GFL, and we negotiated a three-year renewal of that contract. And they gave us everything that we asked for, including a dedicated phone line for Bloomfield Hills residents. And what, we were slightly into that renewal period when Bloomfield Township decided that they were going to sever their relationship with GFL, and they gave all of their business to Priority. And shortly thereafter, GFL must have decided that it was no longer beneficial or profitable to continue a relationship with a small city like us. And they gave us notice, official notice, that they were going out of the residential business, and they were assigning our contract, our contract to Priority. And, um, we had no choice. That was, that was really a choice that Bloomfield Township made that caused the cards to fall in our direction. But the good thing was that under contract law, the, um, the party, Priority, who took an assignment of our contract, had to step into the shoes of GFL. And they had to continue to perform under our GFL contract and the renewal term for the full renewal term. So our contract right now with Priority is actually our, our very good GFL contract that was negotiated eight years prior to the three-year renewal period. And that's a good thing. And I would suggest that in the event, after we do the RFP, we decide to continue with Priority, that we just do another renewal. Because that GFL contract had everything that we wanted in it, basically. We may have some new items that we need, like performance guarantees and so forth, that we would want to add into it. But it's something to think about, um, that, you know, we have a good, solid contract, at least in place with Priority. But if people are, if people, you know, say things to you like, why did you choose Priority, or, you know, you did us a disservice, I think it, I think it bears explaining that we didn't. We were sort of just left with that. I mean, Bloomfield Township has 40,000 residents, we have 4,500 residents.
Forty-three hundred.
Forty-three hundred residents, you know, we have, they have, um, a lot more. They have, uh, 16,804 households. We, we have 1700 households.
We're really looking at 1700.
So we're, you know, they may, they were the decision maker here, Bloomfield Township was. So just, I just wanted to say that.
Thank you.
I don't mean to interrupt, but I mean, I also think we should do an RFP.
I support that.
I support that too. You know,
We need to make a motion?
I would just like to make one comment about Runco.
Yes.
Sometimes, in my experience in business, is that if somebody's looking to get into a new business, they tend to go the extra mile to, you know, to make it right and to work with it and everything. So I wouldn't let that get a, I wouldn't let that scare us away. I think when you do the RFP, like you said, just be very thorough what we're looking for, and let's see if they can check all the boxes. And they might
Yeah, we'll just bring it all back to you, and you tell us what you want, and we'll, we'll make it happen.
Yeah, I, I might, I don't know if you need a vote, but my, I'd say go with the RFP and let's see what they all say.
Yeah, I, I appreciate a vote.
Sounds pretty unanimous, everyone.
I'll make a motion. I move that we authorize city staff to prepare and issue an RFP for waste services, recycling, and yard waste collection, inviting proposals from Priority Waste, Waste Management, Runco Waste, and potentially other providers, while also reserving the option to continue our relationship with Priority Waste, whether by a new contract or by extension of the existing contract that Priority assumed from GFL.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? I guess we need a second, don't we? I'm sorry.
I think, yeah, I support it.
I did, but I don't think I know.
Yeah, she did.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, again, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That's as the motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, the next two items, two and three, uh, were tabled at the planning commission in, uh, in the meeting earlier this evening. So we're gonna move on to Ncode Plus contract amendment. Commission will consider an amendment to the Ncode Plus contract for the on-call services. Uh, City Manager Hendrickson will provide additional details.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Commission. Um, actually, what I'm asking for is to, to enter into a, an additional contract with Ncode Plus. And I can give you a little history why. I, um, recently, we were looking, uh, we've been starting to prepare for, uh, Ncode Plus to go through our zoning ordinances, and, and essentially what they're gonna do is they're just going to, um, take the current ordinance information and the meaning of it, and just make it, uh, more easily, um, understandable and by adding graphics and organizing it. It's really a reorganization tool. But we're, we've been looking at some zoning ordinances, and one zoning ordinance in particular is an open space ordinance. And we've been doing some research on how we believe we can actually add open space by cutting out some of the, um, exceptions. And so I had the planning, our planners, do a study on, uh, different approvals by the planning commission um, for open, or for, for properties that were adding things in, like pools and sports courts and, um, solid surfaces, and remove all the exceptions and to find out where we would be at. And in almost every case, uh, it, it would be better not to have exceptions. So, um, that's something that we want to bring to the commission, to the planning commission to review, and then ultimately, if it's recommended, to the city commission. But since we have this company that's gonna be going through this zoning ordinance, and we do come across some things that we might want a second set of eyes on. I contacted Ncode Plus and said, it's just something you can do, but it's not part of the original contract. It's not their job to rewrite anything or change the meaning of any ordinances. But if, um, if we believe that modifying an ordinance could be helpful, it obviously has to go through the planning commission process and the city commission process. Um, but it would be helpful to us to have the people that are actually, uh, doing some restructuring of this, of the zoning ordinance, to maybe if we see something, take a look at it. And they have a lot of experience with planning throughout the country, and they write zoning ordinances, zoning ordinances. So I thought it would be a good idea to have them take a look at it, but I can't do it unless I have a, a contract with them. So, um, I asked Mark to take a look at the, the contract, and I don't see this being used very often. Um, but I just wanted that extra set of tools. It would be like an hourly basis. I just wanted that extra set of tools. It would be like an hourly basis. So then I asked Mark to take a look at it. He said that, you know, he reviewed the contract. We actually, he had actually made some modifications to the contract, and so what you, what you have here in the packet, I believe you have the contract in the packet, is the iteration that Mark had recommended. But I also checked with our Finance Director, Sandra, to find out where we're at with our planning services budget, and if we were to use some administrative planning services in our current budget, if we would have enough funding to do so. And she believes so, if we do it on a, you know, very limited basis.
The contract isn't really with Ncode Plus, it's with Kandag Keest Collaborative. It's not Ncode Plus. It's, it's the, it's, I don't know what they are. Are they a partnership? Or are they a sole proprietorship? What are?
It's a related, as I understand it, it's a related subsidiary of Ncode, but the connection was through the contract with Ncode.
Yeah, so it's, it's not with them, but, and we, we know we have sufficient funding, even though we don't really know how much we're gonna be using them.
Right, so it, it would be, it would be done in such a way that we would make sure that we have the funding. Otherwise, we'd have to come.
Yeah, if, if I may.
Yes.
This is not like a, a retainer-type situation, it's just one-off, so.
As needed.
If we have money and we have a project, we can do it. If we don't have money, we won't do it, so.
Right.
And who authorizes, whether we do it or don't do it, to change an ordinance?
Well, I think it would, well, no, it would be the city administration. If we find a, a situation where, listen, if, if the Planning Commission, or anybody, anybody, any, any, city commissioner or planning commissioner, if they feel there's a certain ordinance that may need some modification, and they, and they have some recommendations, and then if, if it's appropriate for this company, because they're restructuring the ordinances to take a look at it, I think anybody could. I just know that we most, or more often, will notice something, because our planners, or the folks that are, our consultants, or the folks that are dealing with some of these ordinances, may see something like this open space. I think it's a really good.
Yeah, but I'm concerned, you've brought many ordinances to us changed, and you've worked with our lawyer, and maybe the planners, so you've already been doing that, and I'm uncomfortable giving a third party and giving another avenue to change the ordinances without even first getting the approval of the residents of this city, this Planning Commission, appointed people with experience that know the master plan, that are, you know, have all the residents' best, you know, interest at heart. No, you do as well, I'm just saying.
Yeah. Well, this wouldn't be approval or a change of any.
I don't like the idea of this carte blanche of, of, you know, hourly noodling of our ordinances. Who, what is, where's the check and balance? I don't see that.
Well, this wouldn't be a change in the ordinance. This would be, if there's an opportunity to take a look at a specific issue where, if we believe that the city administration sees some issue, and our consultants, consultants may have said, "Hey, you know, this would be easier for us to explain this ordinance," and they're going through a restructuring process, and when they restructure it, it looks a certain way where it doesn't make a lot of sense. Well, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea to have them give us some ideas on what could make sense, but that would go through a process of going through the Planning Commission, and then ultimately the City Commission. It would go through the ordinance revision policy, which is already in place.
As I understand it, so it, it would flag it.
Yeah.
It would actually say, "This is, this is in conflict with some other things." You would then present potentially a, a suggestion, which then would go in front of either Planning or make a decision.
I think the flagging would may happen, Commissioner, but I think it's the suggestion that I need authorization for, because they're not gonna spend any time making some recommendation from a planning, you know, from their planning knowledge to modify something. They're, they're gonna say, "There's some conflict here. You may wanna, and I suppose we can, you know, talk to our own planners, but if they're in the middle of this, it wouldn't happen, it wouldn't hurt to, in my opinion, they have no point on it, and there's a cost to that."
So we're already paying the fifty thousand to get this all implemented, and then we're paying the annual fee of thirty-seven hundred. I, I thought that they, when they were implementing, would be flagging things, and would be.
I think they'll flag, I think they'll flag things, but they're very sensitive, and I think the City Commission and Planning Commission's very sensitive, that they're not changing things.
Yeah, they're not gonna rewrite it.
Right. Mark, did you have something?
Right, but.
I was just gonna say, this does not change the actual ordinance adoption procedure at all, and they're only gonna get involved at the request of the city. So, you know, the city has control over this.
But this is an hourly thing that is, could be exponential and could be ongoing, and there's nobody checking balancing the hourly rate that we're asking them to do this. So why wouldn't you bring it in front of the Planning Commission, like, "Let's have them investigate this," or bring it in front of the zoning board? I, I don't see any.
What's that?
I, I think that's contemplated. They're not gonna get involved without the city asking them to.
It's, it's gonna be elected.
Right, but my concern is that you're gonna, you personally, the city staff, you said that specifically, the city staff would go to them and, and hire them, you know, hourly, and then you would bring the suggestive changes to the Planning Commission.
So the city's.
Get approved, but I just don't, I don't see why we'd go down that rabbit hole if it's not originally checked and balanced by our Planning Commission.
So the city staff will, what the city staff is doing is they're facilitating this whole ordinance restructuring process. We're facilitating, we're providing the information to, to Ncode Plus. We're making sure that, that they, they are going through this in such a way that they're restructuring everything. It's eventually gonna get to the Planning Commission, but I'm just talking from an efficiency standpoint, and, and my opinion that if we see something that could use a second set of eyes and some recommendations, that we, that we do it. I mean.
Well, would a compromise be to approve the contract and then just agree that if you're planning to engage them, that you would bring that up at the commission meetings, that you intend to engage them for X, Y, Z, and it's gonna be the estimated cost of this, and just so that the commission is in the loop on what, what's happening? I mean, I think what you're saying makes a lot of sense to me. They're gonna be going through this, things are gonna come up. You're gonna need some, some expert advice on, okay, well, how should we fix this problem, because there's a conflict, and then, you know, they're not gonna do that for free.
Yeah.
You need this in place.
We're paying them fifty thousand dollars.
I could do that. The only reason I, I didn't recommend that is because we operate at a pretty fast rate, so we have to wait a month at a time to ask you a question. That was my only.
Well, then why not a phone call, an approval by the chairman of CBA, chairman of the Planning Commission?
Well, that he doesn't, they don't, there's no authority for a Planning Commission member to make a decision on how we do this. There's just, that's not, that there's no authority for that. I mean, the authority for the Planning Commission is for a review, review process, and any Planning Commission member, including the chair, can say, "I think we need to, to rework some of these zoning ordinances," and he can develop a, or put together a, a subcommittee, and there's.
Well, would it be possible to, as you're going through it, you flag certain things that, you know, are issues that you'd like to address, and you get bucketed, and then consolidated, and then you come back to the commission and say, "These are the things we'd like to work on." It's not gonna hurt to leave an ordinance in its current state without changing it materially, and then.
We, I cer, I certainly can do that, and one of the reasons that I, I kind of was thinking to put this together, because I felt that the open space, some of the recommendations that we thought would, would work with the open space, I thought about bringing this study that our planners did, and bringing this information to the, to the City Commission. But I'm actually short on one piece of it, in my opinion. We're doing a thorough analysis. We actually have, and this company take a quick look at it, too.
What, what would you anticipate the onboarding time to be? Ninety days? Hundred and twenty days? Taking the information as we have it today onto this system?
Yeah, what is it, Amy? How, how long?
Maybe I don't understand. I'm just talking about the previous year.
Implement income.
Implementing, implementing this transition, it takes ninety, hundred and twenty days?
For the initial benchmark, yes, but it's beyond that for the full, I think it was up to six months was the end.
Yeah.
That's all right.
So, so is it, is it reasonable to, to, on a monthly basis, say, "We had two exceptions this month, and we had," you know, for the next six months, you would have some barometer as to how, how many exceptions you're addressing? And I mean, I think you could probably quantify what that cost would actually be within a pretty short period of time.
Yeah.
I agree. I'd be much, I'd feel much more comfortable.
Because it's, it's not an ongoing.
We follow the commission's instructions.
I don't see it being ongoing once you get the system implemented. It's really this phase-in point phenomenally, right? You're gonna find some stuff.
Right, there might be, I don't know, maybe there might be a half dozen. It might be, you know, ultimately thousands of dollars, maybe, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't see it as being a big event.
I agree, I agree. And if I can just offer a comment while, while I didn't have the floor. I, I think Dave touched on it, but the landscape open space ordinance, what we've uncovered in the past year and a half is the ordinance that the commission and the Planning Commission believes that they are enforcing is actually not the case. And our investigation and our data is what we're trying to get, and we're trying to get one more professional to dig in that actually doesn't look at our ordinance every day. So a, a second, third set of eyes that's actually digging in with their breadth of experience, with the breadth of experience, that it may just be the landscape open space ordinance. But what we're finding is the recommendation that we potentially would bring to the Planning Commission, and then they would potentially recommend to the City Commission and follow the ordinance policy, would actually be what we believe the commission is trying to do with the landscape open space, but we don't wanna be shortsighted and bring you a product that doesn't have the full review and all the information. So it may just be the landscape open space ordinance, which would be less than, I'm sure, in the thousands.
I'd prefer that you'd get approval to investigate that from the Planning Commission before you go ahead, or the, the City Commission approval, with a guesstimation of, of how many hours it's gonna take. I'm sure they, they give you quotes. This, this could be like, you know, sixty thousand. I mean, you could get all these ordinances that you need all this expertise on, and whenever you feel like, you know, some clarification, or I just think there should be a check and balance.
Well, you know, in, I, there should be a check and balance, and it should, I think the commission needs to know, in, again, in my experience of working, these consultants, it looks like, okay, it's two hundred dollars an hour, okay, but now you got the CEO, and then, oh, by the way, the associate's gonna take a look at it, and then the administrator has to type it up, and then, oh, they gotta come up and to see us, they would be better to present it, and Surrattland, Texas is a long way from us, and that's their charge. It could, it escalates out of, that you don't know, on these things, you don't know how many of these people are gonna need to touch that one ordinance. So I get what you're trying to say, I think it's good, but I think you, I would prefer that you guys say, "Full disclosure," because we're, we're always saying we wanna be transparent with our, with our residents. We want them to know where our tax, their tax dollars are going. So we need to say to them, "Okay, to change this ordinance or whatever, it costs us X amount of dollars with the consultant." And you're saying we're only gonna be using it six times a year or something?
Yeah, I, I don't know. I think it's gonna be more than just the open space, but yeah. I can do it no problem. I just, this is something I do every day, though, with all consultants. I make decisions on what I, we use them for, including our attorney. I do it all day long. So, but I certainly can have this one item for you guys.
I, I thought it was a little bit loosey-goosey, a little bit, because there's two types. It's the work order authorization form, and then there's the general, general work order authorizations. One of them seems to be just like you pick up the phone and you call them, and you get somebody on the phone, and they give you advice, and then they charge us, and that one doesn't seem to be documented very well. The other one, it's like there's actually a work order that's, becomes a part of the contract, when you actually give them a project, and then you know you can limit your, the amount that you're going to be spending. But it's the, the other one, the one that's, you know, the first one that they talk about, the.
Yeah, my plan was to call, if I, if I need them for a certain issue, I would call them and say, "I'd like you to review this ordinance, and this is what I, this is some of the issues that I see with it. What experience do you have? What comparison, what other ordinances have you, zoning ordinances have you written? What do you see out there?" And then have them respond.
Well, usually subcommittees of the Planning Commission put together the ordinances and the ordinance changes, so why wouldn't they use these people to, to call them and help them with? In the same, I mean, I don't know what.
Because they don't have a budget to do so.
Well, they should. I mean, why, it should come, all of our ordinance changes have been, and it should be, and related to the Planning Commission and the subcommittee, and people who actually wrote, you know, the master plan, and wrote a lot of these ordinances, and.
I guess, I guess the only thing I'd add to that is that if, if we only know the ordinance through our lens, and if someone from the outside looks at it, as a third party, and says, "You know what? These thirteen other communities do it this way. This seems cumbersome this way. We should maybe change it." We would want the benefit of that opinion.
Right, but why wouldn't it be the Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission, the Planning Commission wouldn't know that, because they're coming at it from a resident's perspective.
No, but they could hire these people, and they could work with them, because they are the ones that make ordinance changes with their subcommittees and present them for approval.
As I understand it, they're gonna provide something for the Planning Commission to review, and they can modify it as they see, see. I, I just think, I guess, they're ultimately still gonna have a say in it, is how I see it.
After we spend thousands of dollars going in.
Well, but, but, but you're also then not getting the benefit.
Maybe they didn't wanna change it.
Oh, I guess you're not getting the benefit of, of what the other communities are doing, and that may be better.
Why wouldn't you have the Planning Commission work with these people and work with the ordinance?
Because they don't have the perspect, they don't get the benefit of all these other communities and how they do it.
They could if they asked them. They could if they work with them. They'd have the same benefit.
So I see it the other way. This is what I'm saying. I see it the other way.
Yeah, I, I see there's a benefit to getting a third-party perspective on it, and I can certainly understand that concern around, you know, escalating costs and things like that. I just, I sort of feel like there's a, there's gotta be an answer here, a, a way of, you know, getting that perspective and making sure that everybody's comfortable with the budget aspect, because I do feel that you do, you can get tunnel visioned on something, and it's hard to see other options unless you completely step away from it, and maybe sometimes that would be helpful. So I wouldn't wanna miss out on an opportunity to get a, another opinion on something that's really important, so.
I've been on those, those committees, sorry to interrupt, but, and it would be helpful if we could reach out to this person and have this person give us the perspective of what, because I've had to look on Lake Forest, you know, their ordinance review, comparing it to Troy, comparing it to all these, and yes, I mean, it, why wouldn't you have the people that are in the subcommittee making the changes to the ordinances have this access? And this, you know, it just, you're saying because they don't have the budget, but that's not, they are part of the city, and they are part of.
I guess the only thing I'd throw, say to that is, even if a suggestion is made to change it, the planning may say, "Nope, we're gonna keep it the way it is."
True.
And, and I think, I think you want, you wanna have that dialogue. You wanna have someone disagree with you. I mean, you may ultimately decide to leave it, but it's good to kind of explore another way.
Oh, I agree, and I, I love the idea of the expertise of these people, but I'm just suggesting, why shouldn't the Planning Commission, the people that should be writing these ordinances and making the changes to the ordinances, as we deal with all the residents and all the projects that come in? It's unfortunate you haven't been on planning, but we see all the issues that are very relevant to our city, and, and we wanna make sure the ordinances are appropriate for our residents, and.
I, I think you actually, you still get, you still get the final say.
But why, why can't, I, I mean, Dave, you don't have a prob, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Yeah, sorry.
I did. I'm sorry.
Yeah, that, that was my point, that's all I was saying.
Yeah, so, Dave, I mean, y, you shouldn't have a problem with the fact of the Planning Commission or the subcommittees contacting these people, too. I mean, why does it have to be just you? Like, why couldn't, why can't that be a?
Well, they're making it, they're, they're, I guess they're calling, and they're, they're gonna be using consultants within our budget, and that, that's, it's just not their job. It's not, in all due respect, it's not their job. I think it's our job to, to look at this, this, these issues, bring it to the Planning Commission, and the Planning Commission should, if they, if they.
But historically, the Planning Commission has, has made the changes to ordinances. So I'm confused. You, you have introduced changes to policies.
I think they, they, I think the Planning Commission should introduce changes to ordinances they believe should be changed.
Right, so why wouldn't they work with the consultants to?
I believe if they, I believe if they want to get a second opinion on something, they should provide it to us, and we, we'd give it to the consultant to provide that second opinion. I think that's how it should work.
Is, is the, I forgot, is the Ncode contract limited to just the zoning law, or is it, did we open it up to all ordinances?
Right now, we, we haven't done all ordinances yet.
We haven't contracted with them for that, but we may.
Yeah, we wanna see how this works. Yeah, we wanna see how this works. The planning commissioners are part-time and, you know, it's, I think it's hard for folks that are part-time to be taking on responsibilities of investigating, uh, how to modify, modify. So we're ultimately going to bring that to the planning commission because that's their job. And so during that process, all I'm saying is that it would be nice if, if we believe we need a second opinion, especially from, uh, the, the folks that are reorganizing the ordinance, that, uh, were, have the ability to do so.
Why can't you just go to the planning commission and say, we're thinking that there's a loophole here and, um, you know, go to this consultant and get outside...
The last thing I'm gonna do is, is call the plan, call any planning commission members up and start giving them incomplete information. I'd rather just give them complete information that they can evaluate with the subcommittee and make decisions that could be sent to the city commission.
No, the planning commission reports to us, the city commission. We don't report to them.
Right.
And we, the city commission, are primarily responsible for the city ordinances, for enacting them, for amending them. So I don't know why we would have to go to the planning commission first. We use them to review and provide us with recommendations, but we aren't even obligated to accept their recommendations. Because we, am I misstating something? Is she, is that a no? Are we obligated to take...
You, you are correct.
I am correct.
Planning commissioners is...
We are not obligated to accept the planning commission's recommendations. So it's our respons, we're primarily responsible, not the planning commission. I think sometimes it gets, it gets turned around like we're responsible. We're responsible to them, but we're not.
I didn't say we were.
They report to us. And, and we are, if you look at our primary responsibilities that are listed on the website, we're primarily responsible as city commissioners for the, enacting and amending the ordinances, not the planning commission. So...
However, we, historically, the way the process has worked is that the planning commission does review it because they look at, they are in front of these residents once a month.
Yes, yes. They do. For the zoning code, not for the rest of the ordinances, just the zoning code. But, but we aren't obligated to accept their, we, we have our own responsibilities to make determinations. We don't have to take what the planning code, the planning commission tells us. So...
I don't think that's what Dave was saying. I think, so Dave, let's get this full circle around.
Sure.
It sounds like this is an hourly rate that you're doing it.
Yes.
And you're saying that, um, it's an hourly rate, you're gonna see how it's gonna go and you're gonna report out to us on a monthly basis about how much money you're spending with these people.
Yes. I, I would absolutely do that. And we'd absolutely keep it within budget because Sandra would say, Sandra would say, Dave, you're going out.
Sandra said so.
Why can't we go to what Mr. Baxter was suggesting? Like, if you have something you would like them to review, you, you tell us what you think it's gonna cost, what they ask, what they budget and they say it's gonna cost, and you bring it to the commission.
I, I could do that. It's just, to me, it just seems pretty inefficient.
Well, these ordinances take a long time to get together anyway. It's not like they're done in a week. They are not. They're done in six months to nine months. So what is, twenty more days?
Well, I just don't, don't wanna hold up the, the process because in the contract, there is actually timelines to keep this process moving. But I certainly can do that. I mean, I...
Is, is, some of this work is required for us to complete our part of the bargain to, 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 to transfer all the, you know, is it, is it the initial...
Well, I, I, it's not required. It was just, I'm just thinking from an efficiency standpoint and in the best interest of the city and of the, we're, we're going through this process of reorganizing this. It's one of the biggest things that this city has done. Really is.
It's very exciting.
And because of that, in my position, I see things that could be helpful and tools that I could use. And I didn't see this as a big deal at all, as a real cost issue at all. And I just didn't anticipate the, you know, this, this...
I, I think I would be comfortable with reporting out on a monthly basis as to what, what's been looked into, what's been spent. And then if we as a commission decide, you know what, that's, that's going off in the wrong direction, you know, we can...
Sure.
Is there a cap to what this is gonna be? And, and is there any kind of check and balance in place?
The check and balance is me. It's me talking to, to this person and say, what's it gonna cost for you to analyze this? And me making a decision that this is a reasonable thing. I can either take that decision that I think is right and bring it to the city commission and you can vote on if you think my decision was a good decision, or I can bring it to you.
I would like check and balance.
But, in all fairness, I do this every day. I do it with all our consultants.
I would think if you could report on a monthly basis, say what changes were enacted on or acted on,
Yeah.
and if it were a thousand, two thousand dollars, after a month or two or three, we'd know whether or not we like this program or not. And at that point, we'd say, no more, or continue on.
We can say, we didn't think this was beneficial, or we can say this is great.
And all of these changes that you are, you are creating outside of the planning commission, outside of the zoning board, you're gonna do all, spend all this money and get all this thing going. And you haven't had no prior recommendation or approval by the planning commission or the city commission of what you're investigating and what this hourly... I mean, why go down a long rabbit hole investigating something if, if it's not something that needs to be changed or other people don't wanna change? But they're not gonna approve anyway.
I respect that. I, I respect what you're saying. But I think I'm smart enough to know that I would bring something to the planning commission that I think there's value and, and at least for them to, to look at. Because as Amy said before, I just don't believe there's times that the planning commissioner, city commission understand there's conflict. And there's, there's, I mentioned at the, at the planning commission, uh, today, that, uh, there's, there is one id, there's one issue, uh, or agenda item where we're talking about removing trees. So I went and took a look at the trees. I found out there was, there were silver maples. And I thought, yeah, silver maples, we don't, I think, uh, silver maples, you can just remove them. But you know what I found? That's not true. It's not in an ordinance that we can remove silver, silver maples. We just can't, we just, uh, can't replace them. And so I thought, I can tell you these things all day long. So I thought, that's, now I don't need a consultant to help me with that. But there are some more complicated issues that I believe that the planning commission may appreciate that they have this information and, uh, and they can make a decision. That's just my opinion. I certainly will do whatever the, the city commission wants me to do. I thought this was a good plan and a good program. I will follow whatever your directions.
How, how do we, is this a motion to approve the contract?
Well, he's asking for additional monies for the budget and the money's...
No, I'm not. No, I'm not. It's within the budget.
It, it would be a contract to...
From which part of the budget is it?
Planning services. Part of my...
So the planning commission's budget?
No. No, the planning services. Our budget for, for...
Like the money that they're paying the planners and...
Yes. And so it's within the budget. It's one of the things I, I talked about in the beginning of this presentation that I, I do, do my due diligence. I talked to the city attorney. I talked to Sandra about it. We have what I would expect, uh, the monies to do this.
So it's the money that we collect from, um, from building fees and, fees and stuff like that?
No, it's not. It's, it's actually budget money. Maybe this'll be a better way to say it. There are times I call the planners up to give me a, uh, to, to give me some decisions on something. Instead of calling them, I'm calling these people. It's the same budget.
But they don't know our ordinance intimately and...
I think we can evaluate it the next thirty, sixty days and find out if we're comfortable. I'm, I'm...
Then you mean only allowing this for one month and seeing if they'll go?
Well, no, you're gonna, you're gonna get a sense for, in, in a month or two, you're gonna know what, what changes have been made and you're gonna see value. Either are you or aren't.
After a couple of months.
Sure.
Mark?
I just, I wanted to point out there is a termination, seven day notice termination procedure in here, so...
The, the termination clause, I saw that.
I'm sorry?
I saw that. The termination clause was seven days notice?
This is not a, a long-term commitment by any means. I mean, we can get out of this in seven days or something.
Okay. And is there a do not exceed amount that we're spending for a month? No?
No. Did we put that in there?
No, I mean, there's, there's hourly rates. I have to, I have to, I'm gonna make decisions that we're not gonna use them. Because I'm gonna call them. I'm gonna ask how they can help. I, I will make a decision that I might not even use them. But I just want the opportunity to use them if I feel it's appropriate.
The contract does say we have to use them. I, I was a little, it says...
Well, Mark, do you have that with you?
Well, no, it was in the whereas clause. I take that back. I'm sorry. It's in the whereas clause. So it's not enforceable.
I'm still not comfortable with it, but I, I'd, I'd like to see more checks and balances though.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I understand that. But I, I would, from everything I've heard, I would move to approve the contract with the monthly reporting, um, with not only reporting the cost, but also kind of the case study. What was it that was looked into? What were the benefits of that? How it did help or how it did not help? Just kind of so we can get a pulse on how this is...
I'd be, I'd be happy to do this. As a matter of fact, it was, it would be part of my, because I would most likely use them and then bring you a product to, to, this is what we did. I would recommend we take this to the planning commission to review. They can look at it and then maybe it gets back to you. That was my point.
Could you put it in your weekly report?
I can. I can, but I think you, I think you want it.
I'd like to see it written.
Yeah, I'd like to see it as an agenda item.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of a fracture motion.
So, just give it a refresh?
Uh, yeah. Uh, so I moved that we approve signing of the contract for consulting services with a monthly reporting, giving case studies and not only expense, but, uh, providing a case study of what was looked into, what were the results, so that we understand the progress of utilizing it.
Support.
Is there any do not to exceed amount?
I could amend the, the motion with, uh...
Not to exceed our budget.
Well...
What's our budget? What's our budget?
Would, would five thousand be, you know, a month?
I think whatever you, five, it's fine. I don't think, I don't think it's gonna be anywhere near something.
I can't envision this being more than, more than five thousand total.
Then I'd like, then it's easy to have a not to exceed, so let's put one in. That'd be great.
So, is five thousand okay, Sandra?
Yeah, what's, what's your recommendation, Sandra?
Well, I, just when I reviewed it, um, just based on, you know, previous years, what we put in the budget for, we don't do line items, but for that line item, um, there was seventeen thousand dollars, um, for that line item. But that does include using gipples for things as well, so...
For the year.
But we say five thousand is fine?
Not to exceed seventeen for the year? Is that, no?
No, that used it all. It's for, for all of the planning, but, um, it's all the planning.
Five thousand. Well, is it five thousand for the year? And that, that, right.
Is it?
I don't know.
I don't know if that was the dollar amount you...
So we have seventeen thousand to pay all the planners and do all that and...
No, it was for, um, for things like Dave just mentioned, when he would need consultant, um, you know, not the retainer, but, um, for additional work. So that's what was in that bucket was seventeen thousand dollars.
How much do we usually use a year?
Well, last year I think it was fifteen or sixteen. That's how we just increased it.
It used to be about thirty. About cut it down a little bit.
So within that budget that you already use, we, you're gonna carve out five that you would normally ask them?
Yeah, I don't know.
Mark?
Just as a suggestion, uh, there's gonna be monthly reporting. If you wanna set amount for not to exceed, you could always adjust it if there was a, a program that was gonna cost more, or if it's gonna cost less, you could reduce it. We, you'd be free to change it as long as it stays within the budget.
I guess I'm confused. So the budget's for seventeen and we already spent fifteen or sixteen thousand?
No, that's last year's.
Well, last year we spent that on the planners with their advice and all the extra, correct?
No, so...
And we're asking for more?
No, no. So, um, this year, if you're looking at the line item, which, you know, we don't budget by line items, but if you look at that specific line item, um, this year there is seventeen thousand dollars for, you know, if we needed the planner for above and beyond. Um, so, and that was just a slight increase. I, I don't know what percentage, maybe a three percent, four percent increase from last year that we actually spent. So, you know, to say do not exceed seventeen, that would be for, you know, everything that we would use the, our planners for as well. You know, above and beyond their monthly retainer. So...
Well, I'm managing to run over budget, so I think...
Well, the way, when, whenever we do budgeting, we're always reviewing, you know, within that whole department, we're looking to see where, you know,
It's not already in the budget. It says it is.
Okay, well, if we're a little bit over in this, what, what about this line item? So, seventeen thousand is just for that. Very...
Yeah, you could do, we could have a, not to exceed five thousand dollars. And then if I, uh, for some reason I'm spending something like that, I'll come back to the city commission and explain my, the reason why it's costing this much.
Yeah, I was gonna suggest not to exceed five thousand and if you go beyond that, then...
Just leave it at that. Yeah, I can ask permission.
For the year or for...
The umbrella over all that is that you cannot exceed the budget.
Right.
Right, yeah.
I would, well, because we'd have to come to you for a budget amendment. So, it's pretty...
Okay, um, so, all those in favor of...
Amy, do you understand that?
Absolutely.
Do we need to say the amendment again?
I understand. Okay. All right.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Okay, moving on, um, these city hall conference room updates. Uh, the commission will consider approval of the updates to the city hall conference room, along with a corresponding a budgetman amendment for the project. Um, as you can see from the memo, um, the cupboards are split. They are falling off. Um, there's a microwater counter that's chipped. There are not, there's not any artwork or photographs on the wall. So I'm just proposing that we, uh, replace the countertop with the same granite that is, very reasonable granite as we have throughout the whole city hall, very simple. And replace the, uh, the doors with heavy-duty doors that can handle, um, you know, the size. And according to our fabulous voting administrator, uh, Amy Burton, these cupboards are very important because they house the voting equipment, which is quite bulky. And the, this equipment needs to be temperature controlled, so it can't go in the basement where there isn't proper air conditioning, et cetera. And I've looked into getting photographs. She provided some. We've gotten a lot of really great photographs of the city itself and, um, interesting buildings and a fire truck, that, just something to, um, put some photographs on the wall. So, very simple. This is a not to exceed. The granite quote I got was for thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, the cabinetry cost was, seemed very high to me and, um, it was four hundred dollars a door, but they said it was a huge door and had to be supported. I welcome getting outside quotes and from reputable, um, cabinet builders. And I've looked into the framing, you know, normal framing can cost upwards of five hundred dollars a frame, but you can get frame, nicely framed things on frame bridge for, you know, three hundred dollars or less. So, I'm just proposing...
How many pictures are you thinking of?
Um, my designer donated her time and she proposed, uh, the, the main wall, when you walk in from the hallway, um, she proposed eight on, across, two, two rows and then, uh, and we could just do those. And/or she proposed some on top of the, um, the cabinetry. So when you come through the chamber and you look straight ahead over the cabinetry, there'll be photographs there.
So do you have a, a not to exceed amount?
Yes, yeah. I, I mean, the, with even the high quotes, I don't think it'd be more than, uh, twelve thousand. But if something crazy, you know, that Dave wants to add, I think the carpet's fine. I don't know. It's not to exceed twenty thousand, but...
But that's, that would be a budget amendment we need.
This is all for a budget amendment, correct? And it, this is just to ask the city to get, uh, competing quotes and to accept the lowest appropriate, um, reputable, um, quotes. So it's likely to be under even twelve thousand, but, um, by chance, we have to rebuild the cabinet completely or whatever.
Sandra, how are we looking in the budget so far?
For this year?
Mm-huh.
Um, we're doing well. It's hard to say at this point because expenditures always follow.
Right.
But, um, we're not over budget in any line item. But we're not overbudgeted in any line item.
Line item?
Um, but this, I would like to track through the capital expenditures fund.
Expenditures, yeah.
So transferring the mon- money from the general fund into the capital expenditure fund.
I feel like this room, I didn't say, but it's where all the planners meet with the residents to review a project. So it's kind of the face of the city, other than this room. And I think the, there's quite a lot of money in the budget from the builder fees and the permits and given the extensive building in the city, it seems like we're excessive on that. We have extra in the budget from that potentially.
Building funds, the, the, excuse me, the building code funds?
No, more the, the fees that residents pay to get their homes before the planning commission and all of that. It's pretty substantial. I know they are, yeah.
So I haven't considered that we would use any building funds for a renovation. I don't think that that would be, um, yeah.
It'd be more of a capital expenditure. Amy, do those cabinets need to be locked because of the voting?
They do.
So that's the other thing. Right now, they're not very secure.
Right. The door's falling off.
The door's falling off.
The equipment is secure. The election equipment is secure. I want to make that clear. But yes, the cabinets need to be fixed.
They need to be fixed, yeah. Well-
Well, I appreciate Mayor Fisher bringing this up because, you know, it's one of those things where you get used to seeing something in a current state. You don't really think it's ever going to change or needs to change. And you noticed it, so I appreciate that. And I think that you could definitely use an upgrade. And at this stage, all we're doing is just saying, let's go out and get some quotes ready. So we can make a decision later about the actual expense. So I think for tonight is just-
Well, I'd like to get it moving forwards, um, not to exceed. And then trusting the city manager will select the proper-
Well, do we want to do that before we know?
I, I told you, I got initial bids for everything.
You know, they usually get more expensive, and then everybody gets excited about it, saying, "Oh, that'd be really cool if we did this or that," and which is good. I mean, it might require more.
That's why there's a not to exceed, and we can lower that not to exceed amount. And if there's only enough in the budget to do the doors on the cabinet, I mean, we'll just do that and then come back to the commission. But I'd like to see this be done soon.
So do you want to do the not to exceed twenty thousand? That's what I would suggest to all of Brad's points. Do you know what I mean? Because you, like you said, they escalate and stuff like that. We'd want to do it right.
Right.
Um, I'm comfortable spending twenty thousand on getting that updated and the doors made and, you know. We're not going overboard. We're just fixing broken doors and-
Is twenty thousand the right number?
Yes, I think so.
Well, I'll, I'll move that we approve the following project and budget amendment in the amount not to exceed twenty thousand dollars in total. The project is limited to replacement of countertops built, in the built-in cabinet, replacement of doors on the built-in cabinet, and framing, matting, and hanging selective photographs on conference room walls. I further move that in accordance with our city purchasing policy, the city obtained competitive bids for each of the three items previously mentioned and award the business to each lowest bidder.
Quality bidder, please.
Pardon me?
Other quality.
Okay.
That's the assumption, right?
Great, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Great, motion passes. Thank you. Item six, the appointment of election inspectors. The commission will appoint election inspectors to serve at the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election.
Thank you, Mayor. So let me first start by saying, in my twenty-four years here, I don't think I've ever brought this to the city commission when we've actually had an election inspector in the audience. So Cindy Canty's worked for us for a couple of years now for elections, both early voting and in the precinct. So I appreciate that we actually have residents that are here to hear the process.
Thank you for your service. Thank you very much.
What about you, Mr. Canty?
I can be available.
I think you'd have to separate them. I'd have to separate them.
Yeah, you'd have to separate them, right?
So anyways, the city commission knows you're the election commission, so every month before an election, you're, one of your duties is to appoint qualified election inspectors. All these individuals are trained, qualified. Every two years, they have to attend training and have worked successfully for us here in the city of Bloomfield Hills. Know our process, know early voting, and we are so grateful that we have residents who volunteer because sometimes there's slow days, and sometimes they're really busy days, but they always show up prepared with a smile and ready to serve the community. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know that we will be fully staffed and ready on November fourth.
Great.
Well, Cindy's there. We're all set. We know that.
Thank you. Can we just make a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that the commission approve the election inspectors to serve at the November fourth, twenty twenty-five election as presented, the neighbors as presented.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Thank you.
Motion passed.
Thank you for doing that, Cindy. It's really important to the city. It's wonderful.
Continuing on, on behalf of the city commission and the city of Bloomfield Hills, I would like to recognize David Fisher for answering the call to community service and serving the residents of the city of Bloomfield Hills with the dedication of his time and commitment to the office which he was elected. We want to thank him for his insightful contributions, always with a logical approach and with the best interests of the Bloomfield Hills at the forefront of your leadership. The city commission extends our deepest appreciation of your service and like to give you a little token of our appreciation.
Thank you. So this means I'm leaving, huh?
No, we're very sad. It's your last meeting.
Thank you.
It is.
Thank you.
See what you got. We all want to see what you got.
Really?
Yeah.
In the meantime, we will hear the city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad you did that because that was before me because I was actually going to make a comment about Commissioner Fisher. The city staff appreciates Commissioner David Fisher. I wanted to take a moment to recognize him for his service to the city over the past two years on the city commission. During his term, David consistently brought a thoughtful and logical perspective to the commission's work, helping to foster clear, balanced, and well-informed discussions. His steady approach and commitment to the community were noticed and appreciated. From the city staff, we wanted to thank him for the time and effort he dedicated to serving the residents of Bloomfield Hills.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I guess it's a day of recognition. I also wanted to recognize Amy for, for helping me out this last weekend. I was not here. And I think the city commission would appreciate this. Amy, you know, she's exceptional. She does exceptional work, and I wanted to recognize her for her leadership. While on vacation, Amy managed the city's day-to-day operations with great skill and professionalism, ensuring that everything continued to run smoothly. She not only oversaw all departments effectively, but also kept me well-informed throughout the week. Amy is a tremendous resource to the city. Today, I learned that she's been here twenty-four years, a long, longest serving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much.
I'm not finished. I'm not finished. Because of that twenty-four years, her institutional and historical knowledge of our operations is invaluable. And she regularly provides support to our city commissioners. I see it all the time. And all of our appointed and elected officials. We've been very fortunate to have her steady leadership and deep commitment to the city of Bloomfield Hills. I want to sincerely thank her for her outstanding work and dedication to make sure our operations and employees are always well-supported. So thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
That's all I have.
Connie kind of spilled the beans at the planning commission, didn't she, though?
She did. She did.
She, I, Connie Silcom has been on the planning commission for twenty-four years. And she looked at Amy, and she goes, "Amy, how long have you been here? Because you and I started at the same time." So it's just so, it's funny. That was coincidental. Okay.
Thank you.
And I can't thank you enough for the residents for coming. It's like, we love it when residents come because, and we love your passion. Yeah.
Thank you. And thank you, I have to say, just, I mean, we both, you know, we appreciate the reception that we got to the concerns. And certainly good to meet our chief and, and see all of you and, and we miss you more. And it bothered me when I saw no citizens recognized. Nobody was here. I was just like-
I know.
Well?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's right. Thank you.
That's nice.
Appreciate it. Is there any other business to come before the commission this evening?
No.
Nope. So, there's none for the business. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
No motion.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Done. Thank you, everybody.